I'd like to call a regular Board of Education meeting in order, please rise and play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the color of the litigious land, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Go Paul Carey.
Ms. Lynn?
Delayed.
Ms. Sear?
Here.
Ms. Clatchton?
Here.
Mr. Kaski?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Zough?
Here.
Mr. Gadsden?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Fire exits, please, or at the back of the LGA.
I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals and to seek legal advice from the school attorney regarding review of collective bargaining with the CSEA and the board is expected to return at nine, no, eight o'clock.
Someone?
Second. Comments or questions?
Might we be adding something else to that list of things that we want to discuss with our attorney? Perhaps we could just say other matters. We don't need to really specify what we want to talk with with the attorney, do we?
I think category.
So you're saying the category squared, basically, to seek legal advice?
Yeah, because we've done that in the past and I think that passes muster just to say to seek legal advice.
Yeah.
Because we have more than one thing that's likely to be discussed, I think.
Absolutely.
I think you should just mention at least the category you got to seek legal advice on. Is what Anthony said not covered in what you're looking for for legal advice?
What does it say here?
Just collective bargaining.
It was very specific as to reviewing collective bargaining with the CSEA. I mean, that's, that's one of the exemptions that allows you to discuss things in executive session, whether it's with your attorney or not.
Yes.
But when we talk about the school attorney counsel-client privilege, I'm not aware that that requires a specific listing, but we could do it if we want. I mean, I think it might be a little cumbersome to talk about all the specific things unless somebody's prepared a list.
Well, that's what we said, the employment history of the particular person and individuals and to seek legal advice from the school attorney, and the first one is going to be regarding collective bargaining of the CSEA.
I think we're fine. I think we're doing the right thing. I think, I think we need to list the categories for sake of transparency and, and that there's no question that we ought to take an executive session to seriously address and not circumvent open meetings.
The attorneys are only coming for the CSEA part.
Okay. If that's the only thing you've arranged for them to talk about, then we're limited to that in terms of.
Right, to seek consulting advice for the CSEA part.
Okay, then you clear.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried, eight oh.
All right. So I'd like to call for a moment silence for Ms. Donna Peterson, school nurse at Roundabout Middle School.
Thank you. So I would just like to comment and say Donna gave a strong fight. She was, she lived by Beacon her whole life. She's a graduate of Beacon. She dedicated herself to the students of Beacon and her family, and she's definitely going to be missed. For the agenda, we have a revision to 11.14, which is a policy. I believe there was a sentence deletion, correct?
It's lined out on the project.
So it is lined out on the electronic copy of the project. All right, do we have any student or school presentations? Seeing none. Any parent groups? Seeing none. Open to the public. Anybody like to address the board? Seeing none, we're going to go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Anthony. Just a few things I want to talk about. First is thanks to the community for the support for the capital project. It feels like it was a while ago, but it was just six days ago that we had the vote and we had eighty-three percent of voters approve the project. The work starts at the next facilities. Well, the work has been going on, but the work will continue at the facilities committee meeting on December eighteenth. But we're just really excited. I think some things that we learned through this was we can always do better, but I think the community outreach part was, was really powerful for us. We met with all the PTOs sort of throughout the month of November and we did two community presentations along with adding a lot of information sort of as we went to a special website. We'll keep the website going for this project. We'll add more info there, but, but the lessons we learned from this capital project, we're going to take to budget development. So just to preview a little bit, we're still working on the planning of this, but for budget development, we are going to do some, we're going to do some, some community involvement in that as well. We are setting up meetings for the month of January with hopefully all of our PTOs. If the PTO can't do it, we're just going to have an open meeting at a school. And what we're looking to do at those meetings is to hear from parents and community members about things that they want to see in the short-term aspect of the budget and long-term, like long-term being over several years. We're also going to set up meetings at each of our schools for faculty and staff to inform, I say informally, we're not going to do it during a regular faculty meeting, but we're going to do that during the month of January as well. We set up meetings at each school for faculty and staff to meet with us with their budget input. And we also will meet with other community groups about the budget during January or early February, I should say, as well. So we have already set some of these up. Hopefully, we can get the majority of them set up before winter break. Because we want a lot of that, we have thoughts. I hear a lot of things. I do a lot of listening. We have thoughts about what should be both in our short-term and long-range, long-range planning for the budget, but we could do more of that. And we learned a lot from the capital project in terms of things people wanted to see in the district, and we think this will be a really great avenue for us. PTOs did a great job getting people out for those capital meetings, so we hope that they can do the same for these budget meetings. It won't be the only budget meeting we have. We then aim to, after the board adopts a budget in April, we will go back around to all of the school PTOs to then present the budget to them and probably do one or two community presentations as well, kind of like the capital project. So, so we are excited about that and we really, really enjoyed getting out and talking with folks about the capital project, and we're going to do the same with our school budget. In terms of budget process, we will be unveiling the school board budget calendar before or on the first board meeting in January, and so hopefully that will dovetail nicely with this community work that we're doing. So we're excited about that. Things coming up in terms of communication, the superintendent's blog is going strong. We have, I have made three posts. Post number four is coming out tomorrow, and so that will be, that's kind of a new item on the website that we're working on. And the Beacon app will be ready to roll in January, and the app will be something that people with their smartphones can get regular updates from the district and notifications and all that good stuff. So we just are working on the last couple of details. It's almost ready to go and we're going to unveil it right after we get back in early January. And then the last thing I want to announce is we will be adding two student, school board members to, to us in January. We have, and I'm going to apologize in advance, I'm going to probably get her name wrong. Hopefully, for the last time, I'll get it wrong, but Annie Akamuni and Noah Corey are going to be representing Beacon High School on the board. I have a lot of experience from my previous school district, Ithaca. We had five student board members in Ithaca. They will participate in the board comments. They'll be representing their constituents in the board comments. They'll also, when we were making presentations, they'll be able to ask questions, just like any other board member, and, you know, actively involved. They're not voting members and they're not obviously participating in the exact session. But when I laid that out to both of them, they were excited about that, and when I talked about we're just about to enter budget season, they said they have a lot of questions to ask. So my experience in Ithaca was some, some really good questions came from, from the student board members and the, and the students they were representing, so I'm really excited about that. And that is it. Lots of great things happening and just really excited to, to flip over into 2018 and start working on the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Landau. Committee reports including board comments. Mike?
Okay, for the facilities and operations committee, as Dr. Landau stated, I'm very excited that the capital project has been approved and our next facilities meeting is December eighteenth, seven PM. And we are looking forward to, you know, starting to lay out what is, what does the schedule look like from here through implementation, trying to try to get that together so people can, you know, see visibly where we are in the process. And again, you know, most of it's implementation in 2019. Now, one of the other interesting aspects is the, our policy 7000, which is on for first read tonight, facilities development goals states, I'll just read one, one for everybody to keep in mind. Accordingly, the board establishes the following broad goals for facilities development. Number one, integrate facilities planning with other aspects of district planning in a comprehensive program designed to support the board's educational philosophy and instructional goals. So as we look at budget, the budgeting process, you know, you can get a lot into this chicken and the egg. Well, we want to do this program, but we don't have the facility. I can't build the facility because I don't have a program. So really, if we can, if we can get some high-level, you know, the vision of where we want to be, then all the other committees, you know, curriculum, facilities and everybody else, budgets and the teachers, et cetera, to line up behind there, this is really the budgeting season is the way, the way to do that. So, so I wanted to mention that. That's, that's going to be in all our minds as we go through budget season. Budget process. Forward. So one other thing I want to talk about was during the last meeting in December fifth, we also talked about the, the Edward Project and the impact on the school district and the fact that the city of, the Beacon Planning Board is discussing these impacts, the development on the community. This is a 307, you know, unit high-density housing complex, and one of the major discussions is regarding impact on the district. You know, the district has, you know, through our attorney, has attended a lot of the meetings for months, trying to state the district's position with regard to the, you know, number of incremental students, the cost of education per student, the challenge and challenging the assessment value that the developers are putting on the project, because that all feeds into basically the impact on taxes and impact on all the taxpayers. It seems like there's a difference between what the developer is saying and what the school district or attorney is saying, and the planning board seems to be taking, you know, the information from the developer over that from the Board of Education, and I'm not really sure why. So at the December fifth meeting, the board approved a motion stating that the Beacon City School District Board believes that there will be a potential significant adverse impact to the district from that project. And what's, what more does the city planning board need to know at this stage? You know, if you have a, if you have a dental question, you ask your dentist. If you have a question, medical question, you ask your doctor. And if there's a question about the impact on the school district, why not ask the Beacon City School District Board of Education, who knows the cost to educate students and knows the plans the district has and how incremental students and costs would impact those plans? Also, these, these decisions would set precedent on all the other developments in Beacon as to the assumptions on school impacts. So, so if, if a positive secret declaration was made by the planning board, what we do is we'd open up the discussion about more detailed analysis to make sure we're, we're in line, you know, we fully understand the basis of the developer and understand the district's position in order to be able to fully understand the impacts and develop mitigating strategies to address these impacts. And some of these strategies might be, you know, a per-unit assessment on, on the development in order to be able, you know, for the district to be able to make modifications or expansions or whatever, you know, to incorporate those changes. And so the other, the other thing is that I'm, I am a town of Fishkill resident, not a Beacon City School District resident. I, I do not pay city taxes, but I do pay my Beacon City School District taxes.
Yeah, I think you said that right.
Yeah, so you're, you're a, you're a district resident, but not a city resident.
But not a town, yeah.
Right, well, I'm a school district, I pay school taxes.
Right, you're a district resident, but a Beacon City.
I don't pay to the city, right. So, so the city planning board is making decisions really representing city residents where, you know, they're not representing me because I'm, you know, I didn't elect them to their positions or the city council. You know, who I did elect and who does represent me is the Board of Education. So really, in matters that could impact school taxes, in order to be fair to the residents of the towns of Fishkill and Glan, and Watertus Falls, you know, the planning board and the city council should take, you know, take the, the school district input, the school district input when they're trying to make those kind of decisions, because the, the school district is one that represents those additional taxpayers. So there is a planning board meeting tomorrow night, and unfortunately, I will not be there because I will be traveling for work. But hopefully, people will be there to also state their opinions, and I did submit a similar statement to directly via email to the planning board. So, end of my report. Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you, Mike, and I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. I think that we, we should be part of this conversation. We've talked a lot about improving our relationship with the city. In general, I don't know if it will improve our relationship or not, but we need to improve our communication with them. We, we should be part of this conversation. It's really important, and we, we do have experience and knowledge to, to bring to it. So I hope that the board will be heard, because it is a really important issue that we face, and it, and because of the complicated districting, you know, we are also, we will also be impacted by the development of which there's quite a bit happening in Fishkill and Glenham, the Chevron project, Mooseford, et cetera. So, yeah, I hope we'll be talking a lot more about this and figure out, we took, we talked about adding this issue to the PR committee. I, you know, we should decide if that's the place for it or if it deserves its own committee. I had voiced an opinion that I, I thought it should be a separate committee, because it is really a very distinct issue, and it's not so much about PR, but really just communicating and planning with this, with the proper entities in the city and planning boards. So, so thanks for that. The next, speaking of development, the next Chevron meeting actually hasn't been made yet. It's, it was supposed to be January tenth that they're thinking of postponing it, so I can update you on that later. The good news there is that Chevron has agreed to donate $4,500 to the district, which brings their, the grand total of their donations over the last few years to $17,000, which is the perfect amount to supply the seventh grade tech program with these Lego mine stores, I think they're called, so that the seventh graders will get to use them with our great new tech teacher. So that's exciting. And there is a curriculum meeting on December twentieth?
Yes.
At two forty-five? I think two forty-five.
Yes.
And the last thing I want to say is that I attended the band and chorus performance for the middle school last week. It was really great. The students were super, super great. And also the middle school musical, I, I won't lie, I went all three nights and I thought it was really good. I did want to express my, just, I, I just hope that we can do it a little bit differently next year, so that there's not a private performance of the same age group happening across the street at the high school the same weekend. I think that that did take away a little bit from attendance at the middle school musical, and that's how they raise money for costumes, et cetera. So I think it would be important to really plan ahead and not give away, I'm all for renting out high school for performances, but to, to make sure we don't impact our own students' performances at the same time. Thanks.
Anthony?
Hello. I also attended the Mulan Junior Play at Roundabout. I didn't go to the other one. You know my legacies on, I'm sorry. So, no, I thought it was a great play. And I also, there was a technology meeting on November twenty-eighth, and the report from that was that the, the Matt led the committee, and it, the committee is aligning themselves to the goals, the curriculum goals that the board set, and the challenge is to start fleshing out what is the 21st century learning environment. We went through some updates, the smart bond, there's been some, some loops that the state were still jumping through. There's going to be some more professional development of technology, and we, and there's also going to be the pilot of one-to-one Chromebooks for the seventh graders starting in January, which is the second semester. There's going to be parent information night and updates of parent handbook, parent, student parent handbook. Talked about inequities, like the glade maker space, there's going to be purchases for Hazibots and 3D printers. And the first, the first Lego League that is at JV Forest took months to get started, and they're still learning from it. It's, it's still considered a pilot. Talked about short-term girls and goals and long-term goals, and it's completely drafted. It was just a brainstorming session. We talked about how to streamline teachers' requests, how to foster creativity when there's no voice, and sharing resources and subscriptions. Talked about alternate funding sources, perhaps through a BOSIS closer, looking at Newbrooke's technology plan, and also in doing everything in terms of inequities, not discultue innovation. The next technology committee will be January ninth. The next diversity committee is December fourteenth.
Do you know what time, technology?
Probably four o'clock.
Probably, or?
It's a three, three, it's, it might be three forty-five to five.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not on the calendar. At least, maybe I don't have all the time. Can't find it at the moment. But, so the next diversity committee is this Thursday at, December fourteenth at eight fifteen PM at the district office. I, I am working on postponing the community presentation, which was originally slated for January eleventh. The, some of my comments are, as board members, and I'm glad that we're looking at the real story behind the college remediation conversation by the Mid Hudson School Study Council dated November of 2017. And I look forward to see what discussion we'll have here in the district, hopefully spark improvements to better prepare our students for college, also for the 2018 budget. You know, we'd like to also see how we can increase, use the increased staff diversity, address culture of awareness equality and safety, and eliminate barriers. Just as a personal note, if, if folks don't know, I, I'm in environmental engineering, I work for the EPA, and I work in a water program, and I'm cross-trained, and I am taking a deployment to Hurricane Maria Response in Puerto Rico December thirtieth to January sixteenth, so I'll be missing the board meeting on January eighth, and I'll be missing technology meeting on January ninth, so if another board member wants to cover the technology committee meeting, I would appreciate it.
Is anybody available?
I probably can.
Mary?
Mary, if something comes up, I can.
And that's all I have to report. Thank you. Phil?
Yeah, I attended the Dutch County School Board Association meeting on Thursday. Our guest speaker is Abet Alder, who works for Dutch County Government. She's the Director of Department of Behavioral Learning Health. She talked a little bit about their stabilization center that they set up this year. It's the only one in New York State, one of only eight in the country. It's a fairly innovative approach to dealing with clientele who are experiencing emotional or, or mental issues. It's, it's an alternative, instead of sending people to the emergency room when, when they're having issues, it's, you send them there or they go there, or they just contact there and talk, talk to somebody there. So it's, it's, unless, you know, so they're having an actual medical emergency, they feel it's a better, better way of handling those kind of crises than sending someone to an emergency room where you could sit for hours and hours before they can, they can see you. She also talked about, since she was talking with the school board officials, the programs that they have there for students. She said that, you know, one of the things I realized that nowadays, students don't usually use the telephone to call up, they text, so they, they have a, a text hotline as well. So, you know, there, there's an app that you can download for your smartphone that'll put you in touch with their, with their center, you can text to them, or you can talk to them on the phone, as well as links to other services. She gave us cards, which I'll give to Cecilia, you may already, many have these in the district, but these are cards where they just, they said, you give these to your students, put them up on the walls in places where students congregate, you know, and there's even a, a code they can just scan into the phone and download the app. And that, that basically just talks about how, if you have, if you're having questions or issues, you can, you can call them. Also talked about some of the programs they have. They're doing public forums in, in 2018. There's four different forums, one on service needs for individuals with intellectual and development disabilities, one for service needs for individuals with chemical dependency, mental health service needs for children, and mental health service needs for adults. So, just in case, something you want to distribute to anybody from the staff that wants to go to that as well. So that was a very interesting, you know, conversation about how forward-thinking Dutch County is in trying to address emotional and mental needs of the citizens, and especially even the students in Dutch County. Also, as a reminder, I mentioned it the last time, January twentieth, Dutch County School Board Association is putting on a, a breakfast meeting with the local state legislators for, that represent all of Dutch County, that's both the state senate and state congressman. That's at, January twentieth, that's a Saturday from ten to eleven thirty. It'll be up at the Marriott Courtyard, right up on Route Nine, and I'm sure I'll, I'll remind you again at our January meeting. The more people that go, the better.
Absolutely. Thank you. Georgia?
Okay. We did not meet as a policy committee in December, but some of the policies that we have before you are for the first reads. We had wanted the Director of Facilities to take a look at some of the policies prior to putting them on the agenda, which, you know, just to make sure they were okay, they were just regular policies from our e-server for review. The executive session policy is something we approved in the spring, but there were some minor adjustments recommended from our e-server policy as well, so that's why it's on there also. And then we wanted the field trips and excursions. I believe the meeting in January?
Seventeenth.
Is the seventeenth, right?
I think so.
At seven?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, okay. That'll be our next policy committee meeting. And you said you'll be back when, Anthony?
On the sixteenth.
Okay.
I don't know.
If you need me to reschedule, just.
Well, I don't, I don't know my flight schedules yet.
Okay. And let me know if you want to be, if you want.
Thank you.
Us to consider rescheduling.
Appreciate it.
And I also want to thank all the voters. I think it's great that we had such a good turnout for the election last week. And again, Mike, thank you for sharing that and spearheading that as well.
Kristen?
Yeah, the, I believe the next, I, so the last meeting I left before the end of it, I believe the next one, this committee is this Wednesday at four. I believe we're going to be going over a draft policy, but then we'll be sent to the board?
Thirteen.
Thirteenth, yes. December thirteenth at four PM.
I just wasn't sure, I was just trying to figure out.
No, I know, that's what I, I know, have it right here in front of me, the date. We'll be going over a draft policy, which our administrators will be supplying based on comments from the past couple of meetings. Bill, what you just described about the, the services available would be something really useful for us to talk about at that meeting, so that we could promote it. So I saw that you gave Cecilia some of the information, so if you wouldn't mind... So, if you wouldn't mind bringing that. And if there's like an email update or some documents that you'd send me, that would be...
Yeah, she didn't have anything in her shortcut. It was all hard copy.
Do you have her contact information?
I believe it's on those things as well.
All right, great. That would be... I know one person in the committee is very interested in mental health as part of the wellness committee. So, it'd be really useful to bring that forward. And I'm hoping to attend the planning board meeting tomorrow. Been following this issue for a while. It's... I don't see it as anything other than the most important thing isn't even whether, you know, who likes who, or, you know, feeling like we're... I just think one of the most important parts of the community are, you know, your children and your students. They don't have... They cannot vote directly for things. So, they have to be represented and given a voice. And I think that it's very important to have the schools be a factor that's considered when any big plans are going forward, especially as it relates to development and issues that will impact. And it's... I think it's worked so far. I think we've had a lot of back and forth, but I think it's really been fruitful in terms of explaining how school boards have to think about things and how we have to plan and all of the responsibility we have. So, I've actually seen it as really productive. And I'm hopeful that the planning board will see it that way as well. And then finally, I would just like to add that as a community member, as a Board of Education member, and as a parent, I definitely keenly feel the loss of Donna Peterson. She was... Her family continues to be in the district. And I think I know after seeing everybody that came out to show them and her respect, they'll be well-supported. And I know that they have all of Beacon behind them. Saw a lot of community there on their behalf and a lot of people from the schools. She had a huge impact on students and staff.
Well said, by the way. Thank you. I'm very pleased to hear of Dr. Landau's plans for the budget outreach, which essentially mirrors what we did with the capital project. That worked very well. And I think your plans represent a nice upgrade and improvement, which is something I'm sure we're all pleased to see. And I think the community will respond favorably. I hope to see more people out than we do tonight, though. I don't want people to think everything is so wonderful that they don't have to come out anymore. We do need that input from the community. During the past couple of weeks, I made an observation about a wonderful tool that we have, which is called Power School. That is a fantastic system that tells you exactly how your students are doing, at least up to the point where the teachers fill it in. And most of them are pretty on top of it. However, there's also an email facility with that, where you can get a daily email or a periodic email that gives you that information right to your smartphone while you're having breakfast with the kid in the morning. And it got stuck at the end of the first quarter. I noticed that it just wasn't updating. So, I communicated with Mr. Fashin. And they looked into it, and they found it indeed had gotten stuck. And they got it unstuck. So, that system is back up. And what I learned from that is I should have said something earlier. I thought maybe there was a button to push and it just, you know, overlooked. But technology does have its little glitch points. It sometimes requires a little TLC from the operators in the tech shop. So, if you see something, say something. I think that the Capitol vote, 480 to 98, is a very good sign. I was expecting a larger negative vote simply because historically, it has always seemed like you could count out about 300 people to vote against anything. And apparently, 200 of them stayed home and didn't come out to vote against us. And the favorable vote... You take the total vote. It's not as big as a regular budget election with the regular school board election and the budget vote. So, it's maybe, what, half or so of what we see recently in some of those votes? But I think that's pretty decent for an off-cycle election. And I believe Mr. Lloyd observed that we've had quite a run of very high approvals in the propositions and budget votes that we've had recently. So, that's good to know. I wanted to call some attention to an interesting remark that was made by Tim Dexter, the Beacon Building Inspector, at the last meeting. He talked about community involvement in the development of the Capitol Plan. And he was somewhat critical that it could have been better in terms of outreach. And I recall having made comments, just from this microphone at one of the meetings, that it would be good for people who see things in the school buildings to forward that to their principals. But, you know, we didn't really have a formal program or organized effort to really do that kind of outreach. So, I think that when we get into our next Capitol project, which we'll be thinking about fairly soon as we process the existing one, and as we talk about the current budget project, I think the model that we developed for community outreach and all-hands-on-deck input that Dr. Landau's been referring to will serve well for the next Capitol program as well. And we may pick up a few things that are otherwise missed. Sometimes it's the users at the most basic level that say things like, "Well, how come this isn't fixed?" And they say that to the kid at the next table. They don't bother to say it through the system. And nobody notices who has the power to do something about it. So, talking to the wall doesn't usually do much good. You have to get it into the system. So, I hope that we see a good project in the future with this feedback system. I did go to the concert for the high school music review. And I thought that the teachers and the students did a very fine job. A lot of creativity involved. And I hope to see that we do more of that and more attendance. It's an interesting point that was made earlier about competing events in the district. And we should take a look at that. Thank you.
Craig, can I just ask you, how could it have been more formalized with the Capitol presentations? We had eight presentations.
Not the presentations, sir. It's the development of the work list. So, we had the architects. We had the committee. We have the administration. But what Tim was saying was that the community as a whole was not really fully engaged in the early stages of developing what kind of things we might do. And by the way, that also feeds into the operating budget because a lot of those things have to be taken care of by, you know, a physical plan in the ordinary course of business. It's still a way to catch them.
Thank you.
Can I make one? Just one comment on there. As I know that there was discussions that Emory had with the building leadership about, you know, hey, what are the things? What else do you have in your building that might need to be addressed? Or do you recommend? So, there was a campus... Point well taken about outside the buildings. But there was a campus inside the buildings done to try and capture some of that. So, it was a step. I think we're taking steps here. And a point well taken.
Kenny?
So, I just wanted to say that Nurse Donna will truly be missed. She was a superhero to my son and definitely to my family. So, I just wanted to give great hugs out to her kids and family. Tell them be strong because their mother's representation during her battle was above and beyond a superhero. So, I just wanted to give kudos to her. Rabbi Spodak asked me just to remind and to invite the teachers in the... Oh, he said educators. To the event that's happening on this Thursday, December 13th, at 5:30. It's an event that is hosted by the Beacon Hebrew Alliance, along with Beacon Arts. It will be held at 427 Main Street, which is their new building. So, he just wanted to make sure that I remind people to come out and allow them to celebrate the educators in the building.
427 Main Street is Wednesday night, right?
Yeah, December 13th.
At 5:30?
5:30. And then I just want to thank the senior class advisors and the PTO. My two daughters attended this school. One of my challenges and concerns was that the high school didn't go on a senior trip. And knowing the history here, it just wasn't something that we were able to pull through. And so, this year, I presented it to the PTSO and the building principal. And the PTSO was very receptive. And I'm going to say with a lot of hard work and perseverance, we were able to see it through. And the senior class will be going to Six Flags Great Adventure this year. And so, we are just totally excited about having them go. I even volunteered if they need a volunteer to go. And I don't do Great Adventure. I only do the funnel cake at the entrance and the exit. But I will go if they need me, just to make it happen. I was looking over my book, trying to figure out a date for Public Relations, just to try to get it in. Go ahead.
We have the data.
You have?
I was going to send it to you today, and I forgot.
Okay. So, I didn't want to... I was playing around with December 14th versus the 18th. But I didn't know the 14th is really not a good day for me. It's okay. So, facilities in operation just need it from, I think, seven to eight, am I correct? So, yes. So, with PR from 8:15 to 9:00, you okay?
It was on the...
Okay. So, we can do that. And then, Mary, we can address at that meeting whether or not the Publications Committee feels that utilizing this committee versus, you know, giving it back to the board would be helpful in increasing the communication with the community. So, I think we're going to be in a good position because the survey has been completed. So, we're looking at those areas of outreach and stuff like that. That was not a specific... The city council was not a specific area that we targeted in that survey. But I think just looking at what has happened since Dr. Landau has arrived in terms of getting information out to the community has been definitely gone from a zero to... I won't say zero, because I have to credit the people that have been here. But it has increased a great deal. So, I'll correct myself. So, we're good for the 18th yesterday, right?
Yep, 8:15.
So, I just have a couple of things. First is on November 29th, Governor Cuomo signed a bill that impacts public schools. It's Chapter 410, which is that any student that receives a skills achievement commencement credential and/or a career developmental and occupational studies credential has the right to walk across the stage and be recognized. These credentials are not diplomas. One, the skills achievement commencement credential, they call it the SACC, is for students that are New York State law assessed. And the CDOs credentials, general students and/or specialty students can get that credential into career readiness type of thing, within a liability profile. So, they do have a right to walk. They are... NISBA is starting to put together a policy review for it. So, that's something to be aware of and be on the lookout for. And that's why I mentioned it for that piece. The other thing that I had was about Nurse Donna Peterson. Her mom was my master teacher when I first started. And just knowing the family, and they've been through a lot. Mrs. Holmes, Karen, taught in the district. She retired many years ago. But Donna was great. And she just gave everything. And you saw that in the way that she lived her life up to the last minute. So, she's definitely going to be missed. Another Beacon person passed away as well. Jerry Anleck. Jerry Anleck was a fire truck driver, paid fire driver for WH Mason, the fire company here. He was a volunteer at Slayer Chemical. He was on 1955 football, basketball, baseball team in Beacon. I say 1955 because that's like the only real success the football team had back then. And they went far there. He drove buses for the Beacon City School District for some years. So, he worked for the city of Beacon. His family's been involved in the school community and/or the community at large for many, many years. It's always hard during the holiday times because it's a time for joyous, and there's a lot of things that happen. One of the things that I do want to point out to the school community is it's important what Bill was talking about with mental health. Yesterday, a Newport High School senior tried to take her life. And she's in critical care. And so, there's a whole crisis team that went up to Newport today to help out. As joyous as these times are, just realize people that have mental health issues and the pressures of the holidays become overwhelming for students or people that have difficulties in their life, whether it be anxiety or depression. And just try and keep them in mind and be a little more patient with people during this time. And they'll make it some pressure-ridden time of year. But it's an important topic that Bill was bringing up. And I hope that the district can look at coming up with something as well to just make people more aware of the holidays. People tend to celebrate, celebrate, celebrate. But it's usually, you know, in my experience, it's a time that there's a lot of loss as well. And we need to be cognizant of that, making sure that people are in the right state of mind. The other thing I am very excited about, though, is the Capitol project. I'm hearing so much buzz in the community from community members, not just about the multipurpose field, but about the science labs, about the home and careers, about, you know, being ADA compliant in the buildings and stuff. So, the small things do matter. And people are recognizing that piece. And I think that the plan of advertising that was very thoughtful. I'm now hoping going forward that we can really start talking about education and student achievement as well. I think that's an important topic that we haven't been able to get to because of all the other things. But I feel like one of the primary responsibilities that we have, student achievement, is probably at the top. And I know the little things in the outside things play a part in that. But talking about the curriculum and getting our curriculum that we have in place and seeing how we can enhance that, I'm really excited about starting as a board to get in that nitty-gritty work, where it may not be as glamorous, but yet it's as important because it will definitely affect the students' lives and what they could do. definitely affect the students' lives and, and what they could do. Um, I was just talking to a, a teacher and I'm gonna use swimming as an example, um, how some students may not like swimming, but how to enhance that and maybe offer kayaking and get some kayaks and have them do a kayaking class, um, or snorkeling and stuff. So really getting in the nitty-gritty about the curriculum and how we can enhance what we already have. Because we have facilities, we're enhancing facilities, and now let's take advantage of that and look about student achievement. So, alright. And this is our last board meeting before, um, two thousand eighteen. So everybody have a happy holidays and enjoy the new year. And we're not done yet though.
That's cute.
As I pull up my phone, I need to read my, uh, saying here.
Sounds very fun.
Alright. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to seek more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine. Oh. Do you know what's, thank you. My notes went down and I included that. So, thank you. Um, we do have a item for unfinished business and it's a discussion about, uh, district studies. So I need a motion to start a discussion on district studies.
I think so move.
Craig.
Second.
Kristen, comments or questions about that? No? Okay, Craig, we don't have to vote this.
Sure. Uh, this, this comes from some of our previous discussions about the subject that Kristen briefly addressed relating to development, uh, impact and what it does to the district in the future in terms of student load, facilities, staffing, expenses, the whole list. So, um, there are a number of things that, that have been done and there are a number of things that have been briefly talked about. And I thought it'd be appropriate to go into a more detailed discussion, develop something of a worklist, um, that, uh, would be comprehensive. There, there seems to be a number of factors that are involved in what we're looking at from, from where I sit. One of them we've done is, uh, let's call this one Development Watch. Uh, it might help if we give names to these components. So we asked the Beacon Planning Board to let us know what was coming up, any new proposals and so on. And we've had considerable engagement with them, uh, testy at times, um, but nevertheless, they've been informing us of, uh, what they're doing. Um, and we've been, uh, sending an attorney to engage with them, particularly the Edgewater Project, which is a very large one. It obviously has significant student impact when it gets built. The question being exactly how much. So, we, uh, had also talked about, uh, the other towns, mainly the town of Fishkill, because a great deal of the Beacon School District is in the town of Fishkill and Glenham. And in that large area along nine D all the way up to the Wappinger border. We take into account a small portion of the southern part of the town of Wappinger. I don't know about what, uh, communications out or back we've had from those two towns, but that should be on the list to make sure that we're finding out what's going on there. All I know for sure is that Meredith has been keeping track of the, uh, Chevron Texaco site, uh, basically on her own. Um, but can we get that formalized? Another element is what I would call broad population dynamics. There's a little thing called World War II, which created four million American men going overseas for a period of years. They came back and there was a huge amount of family formation and what was called the baby boom. People my age are kind of on the leading edge of that. And it extended for quite some range of time. And then, as time went by, there was a baby boomlet, when the children of the baby boom became of children bearing age. And there might even be a third, I'm not sure what should we call it, a baby boom, 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 or whatever. Uh, but you know, there are people that study these things and can give us some answers as to what the broad dynamics are. Um, then there's the question of what is happening, let's call it specific Beacon factors. Our community, particularly the city of Beacon, has undergone a renaissance. It's become much more attractive. People have been moving in. I can't recall seeing so many young families and baby buggies and baby bumps going on around this city and most of the time that I've lived here, which is since the, uh, early seventies. So that's gotta mean something. We don't know exactly what. Can we find out? What can we learn? Uh, we have done some things in the past to look at population projections. I think we need to know exactly what those studies found, how old they are, and whether they need to be updated. Census examination. I've had some dealings with the census numbers professionally in my previous work, and I can tell you, it isn't always exactly what it seems. It was the year when the city of Beacon and the town of Fishkill were having a fight over exactly what those numbers meant, because it turns out it means something about aid that you get. So money was on the table. Uh, the problem is, um, the city of Beacon has three census tracts, which are entirely within the city of Beacon. I think they're twenty-one oh one, twenty-one oh two, and twenty-one oh three. And if you saw the map, you'd find your house in one of those zones. There's a fourth one, I think it's called sixty-nine hundred. And that is a weird one because it covers part of the town of Fishkill. And guess what it is? It's where the prisons are. That would be Camp Beacon, which has been depopulated by the state. Used to have several hundred prisoners. Then there's Fishkill Correctional Facility, which lies partly in the city of Beacon and partly in the town of Fishkill. And then there's Downstate, which is all in the town of Fishkill. To really understand those census numbers, you need to disambiguate what's going on with that prison zone, because there's hardly any houses in there that have people that would ever have children going into the district. You realize that prisoners don't send kids into our district. So, um, what we need to understand is that some of the numbers, and this goes back to that Development Watch, some of the numbers that are being presented by developers about our alleged decline in population over a certain period of time, may not reflect what really happens in areas that are legitimately related to development. Given again, that most of the concerns of a planning board don't relate to the prisoners. We do sell them water and sewer. We do provide some fire protection, but they don't affect the schools. So we need to disambiguate what's going on with prisons from these numbers. And it's particularly from the estimates and population projections that are issued by census. The census is an actual count only once every ten years. After that, it's estimates. If you look at those estimates, you see a margin of error that's in the hundreds usually. So relying upon those numbers, as some developers like to do, to say that our population is decreasing, but most people by the seat of their pants are thinking, well, our population is probably increasing. We've got all this development that has occurred. We haven't had a lot of demolition. So is there some kind of major change in family size going on? What's going on? So we need to understand that better and find out who can figure that out. I think there's some truths in there. Uh, whether we can find them or not, I think depends upon how closely we look and how hard we push. So the final element would be facilities capacity. We, uh, apparently, right now, are in pretty good shape. We've got, we've got room. We're not, you know, the toes aren't bumping out the end of the shoes. Uh, however, we don't know exactly how we're using our space until we really itemize it and find out exactly how many rooms we have, how many classes we have, what a recent experience has been, and how much headroom we have. Uh, this doesn't appear to be an urgent concern, but have we looked categorically at every school, every impact? We did see, uh, and we added some staff last budget time because of some bumps that occurred in some of the, some schools and some elementary grades. Is that a one-off, an anomaly, or is it a sign of things to come? Uh, if it is, one of the factors is what is our facility's, uh, capacity? And what would happen if, for example, if we did a stress test? If you said, can you take twenty-five more students? The answer might be sure. Can you take fifty more students in a school? Well, that might be a different answer. Things might start to happen. So I would like to see us get into a more formalized examination of all these, uh, five factors. So that's my.
So Craig, you were just speaking examples there. You weren't speaking from hard numbers when you were saying about fifty students or twenty-five students.
This is pro forma.
Right? That was just you. That wasn't hard numbers that.
No, just for example. And, uh, that, that maybe easily things like that have happened up and down.
What are the standard educational measures of how, um, like the studies that schools apply? Just to, for planning purposes? Like are there, is there, is that, you know, group of?
Are you looking for like a, a projected study of population? I think there's, that, that's what, Anne Marie, I'm gonna ask you to speak on this with, uh, the Suffolk Boses. Can you speak about that? What that.
So Suffolk Boses had a to-do list for us to do, to prepare. And we just sent, we are, and they're about to send them some beds information. So we just got it all current. But they do ask us for factors in your community. And they ask specifics. And then they will reach out to the, um, to the municipalities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, especially since this is such a, um, growing population, they'll reach out. They'll do some population studies as well as development. So I think it's a combination of the two. But there's at least ten or twelve things that the district has to provide to them for them to do the study.
Is that something that, um, that you'd be willing to share, that, that type of data they were looking for? Is that, is that useful to know about or? I, I, I think that, I mean, a part of, for me, part of this discussion isn't as well-formed. It's, I, I think that, I, I know, Dr. Landau, you've said that you've lived in places where they've had to add buildings and, um, so I guess what I'd be interested in is some guidance about what are some best practices in terms of school planning. Not just, I feel like we, one of the things about the planning board going, it just keeps talking about, um, physical space and number of students. And, and I feel like our task is a little bit more complex, you know, as it relates to that, because we look at staff salaries and we look at, you know, programming that we wanna offer. And so, and, you know, uh, I think about, you know, what percentage of people who are moving in with younger children are sending them to private schools and how many people are regressing in the district. And just from a school board perspective, it would be great to keep people here and feel, like there's, there'll always be certain people who seek, uh, you know, education out of district for personal reasons. I, I, I hope that the, um, one of them isn't confidence in the district. And so like, I, I think that as we start to grow our programming and, um, and, uh, you know, are more public about all the good things that are happening here, maybe they'll be more interested if, you know, we see a lot, a large number of younger kids moving in. You know, yeah, I just would love to know some best practices.
I think what you're talking about, Kristen, is almost like having.
Please tell me, 'cause I don't know now.
No, it's like having a, a class size of like per school, per grade.
Right.
And, and so forth. So then you can monitor and then you start getting a historical perspective and you can start planning for future things.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, just a few things. Uh, one is I, I just sent you a sample study that Western Suffolk Boses created for Marlboro last year. It's like an eighty-page document, so it's not a quick read, but it's what they will produce for us. So you get a sense of what they'll be doing. And, uh, just a couple of things, like, uh, we, we, I haven't had a chance to implement this yet here, but in Ithaca, we had a, a class size report that went to the board and to the public every single month. Uh, it was done by a registrar. And it didn't name teachers, but it would say like the classes had a grade, how many kids were in it, how many kids were at the secondary level, how many kids went to private, how many kids were homeschooled, you know? And it just was a public document. It just was something that was done. Uh, the registrar had been doing a job for a really long time, was, had some certain skills. Uh, but I don't think there should be guesswork there. Uh, another, Virginia was a much bigger district I was in, but they, they had a, a planning committee that a couple of board members around staff were on. And then there was members of the community. And it was very, uh, I don't say political, but like it was a very clear process to become a member of it as a community member, because, uh, this district was con, was basically, um, redistricting students probably every year, uh, because of growth. So that's not something we would have to be doing, but it could be something that we have to do a little bit later. On the sort of more short-term end, Anthony Demato just completed, uh, like just like as of five o'clock today, did a, did the elementary schools. He took a blueprint of each elementary school. He wrote the grade, the number of kids in the room. If, if it, there's, if there's, if it's not a school, if it's not a class that's like a all-day-with-kids kind of class, then he labeled it as PTO, T, school psychologist, social worker, whatever, computer lab. And so we'll scan those and just, you know, send those out to you so you can look at it. You do see, you know, you do see some opportunities for space in some of the elementary schools. Um, some just have empty rooms, uh, and some, uh, have, you know, probably changes that could be made if we needed to. Uh, so we'll get those to you probably tomorrow. I mean, it's in his handwriting right now, but, but I figure you can get that right away. So we're kind of trying to do a lot of things. I think the demographic study, uh, sorry, going backwards. Uh, Bill shared with me a demographic study that was done ten years ago, seven years ago?
Two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven. So it's just one document of it. So I haven't figured out the way. I guess I'll just have somebody like scan the whole thing and send it out to you. Uh, so we'll get that out to you too. Um, so we're trying to get us, we're trying to get up to speed on this as well and get you as much information as possible along with getting ourselves. So I think there's some processes we need to put in place, a class size report for the district that goes out on a regular basis. Uh, this is how we're using all of our rooms in our buildings. Uh, it will be getting to you tomorrow. And, and then just, I don't know if it's a board committee for us. We're a smaller district than the district I was describing, but some group of people that just regularly sit down and talk about just this topic, you know, once a month or once a quarter or something. Uh, 'cause it is something, if all these developments do happen, we're gonna have to start. There's gonna be something that needs to happen with redistricting elementary students, uh, you know, 'cause some of the schools have more room than others and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, Mike and Craig, you both mentioned, you know, long-range planning for the next capital project. Like that, that certainly, we need to start thinking about that next capital project now, really. And so, uh, so that could be part of the whole growth thing too.
I would like to see like, uh, if we could get together a class size thing and show that with the board like in February-ish.
Yep.
I don't know if any other board members.
It's, it's not that hard to do.
Yeah. No, I, I think that would be great. I also think that there's probably some, there's just, you know, just, I think that there are people moving into, with school-aged children, moving into certain parts of the district that, and fewer moving into. I know like with Glenham, their numbers were going down and maybe some of their schools not reaching capacity, but were going up. And like, but, um, Dr. Landau was saying about, you know, in the, down the road, we'll have to start thinking about how that, those, um, areas are zoned and.
So for the class size, just to help them with direction as to what we'd like to see, would you like to see it like per building and then for, for the district?
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever makes the most sense for seeing it, you know, easily. Yeah, per building, per district, either, per, per building, per grade.
Yeah, I was actually wondering whether there was any way to take that, me, those measurements further to tie it into the board goals, like, you know, student achievement or curriculum or?
I would like to start with a working document first.
Okay.
And then tie it into that later on. So since we don't have like a working document, I, I think let's get a working document and then we could see how we can adjust it to that, because I think that's the ultimate goal, Anthony.
Yeah, that's what it's.
But I think that we have to take a step before we can get there. Or a couple steps, but definitely having the document first.
Yeah, and redistricting, I think is tricky if, if, um, I mean, if obviously the student starts in one school and they're on the, they're on the line, and you redistrict and they have to transfer to the other school. I don't know if that's, that's a true scenario either.
Yeah. Well, I think he was saying that that's why it's political.
It's just a reality sometimes.
That's why, that's why it's something that makes sense to start thinking about and talking about as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Because then that doesn't come as a surprise to anybody.
Not just for people watching. We're not redistricting.
Yeah.
We're not even close to that whatsoever. It was just, uh, a talking point. I just wanna make sure people are aware.
I've stayed a redistrict man for a while, the central office.
Alright, so I, I think that's a good start, Craig. Good. I'd like to, are we done with that discussion?
Yeah.
I think so.
I would like to add another item to, for discussion that I didn't put on the agenda for unfinished business and it could, unfinished business or new business. Um, it's about the agenda. We had discussions previously. Um, so I would like to make a motion to add a discussion about the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Anthony and Kristen. Uh, so, all those in favor of having a discussion?
Aye.
Alright, opposed? Motion carried. Mine on. Okay. So, in January, we're gonna have two new board members. Um, and there's student board members. So looking at the agenda and looking that we're just getting to the set agenda at nine-twelve, I would like to look at how we set up the agenda. Maybe not having an hour, um, executive session prior to the meeting. Um, maybe having a half-hour and starting earlier. I think that it would get them, we wanna hear what they're gonna, they're gonna be adding to the meeting, giving reports as to what's going on. But we also want to have them be part of discussions that affect the district. And we know, I know that they have some homeworks and other things. So one of the things, it's been on my mind and when we talked about when can we add the student board members, I thought that we needed to solidify how we would do the agenda just because I didn't want it to be, hey, welcome aboard, we're going in exec. And then, you know, they're sitting at here. So I wanna see what the feasibility would be to start at six-thirty instead of seven. And so then, the board meeting would still start at seven. And the executive session in the beginning would be for personnel-related items to the agenda. And then always having, you know, the agenda pretty much staying the same. Um, and then always having that second agenda for, you know, executive session items that, you know, aren't on the agenda.
So you're saying exec from six-thirty to seven, and then a second exec after consent?
Correct.
Uh, I don't know. Maybe perhaps we start at seven. We don't have the executive sessions so early on the agenda. Um, but if there are some items that we get pulled from consent that wants to be, um, discussed in executive session, we'd have the executive session after the consent agenda and then discuss those, uh, discuss those other items after that. I, I would assume that. I I would assume that Anthony.
And I thought about that, Anthony. The only thing I had is if we didn't have the exec and like the opportunity to discuss items on the agenda, we may be pulling a lot and then we're still interrupting the consent agenda, which they would be part of that discussion piece.
Yeah.
Because then we would go into executive session, then coming back out, and they would be having to wait.
No, I I think, well, I think if if it's if it's if it's something that warrants legal discussion and they're not going to have, they're not going to be privy to that discussion. They're going to be, they're they're going to, they're going to be in the dark why we decided what we decided when we come out of executive session anyway. So I don't, I mean, I would, I'm fine with them if they want to stick around, but but it's late. And I think there are going to be some items that we can discuss and have them included on them. And I think there are going to maybe some items that.
In exec?
No.
Oh, okay.
Prior to exec.
Are you saying, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that there's many things in the executive session that do not require, I'm sorry, many things in the consent agenda do not require, uh, a discussion in executive session. We can take care of those. We can take care of presentations, public comments. Then, once we've taken care of hopefully ninety percent of the agenda, go into executive session and then come back and make decisions on the ten percent.
So you're saying we pull the items from the consent agenda that that we have questions on, we vote on the things that were not polled, then we go into executive session and then come back out?
And make the final decision.
The only thing, so I I think that's fine, but the thing is, is that people are waiting here because they're on the something that was polled and we're going to be taking action, they're going to be still waiting. I mean, I'm trying to.
Are you saying that because you it's a hardship to get here at six thirty?
Yes. And 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 they're going to be waiting, I mean, they've they've waited before, after executive session anyway. So that they're they're not going to be late. It's the students who are student board members that we are trying not to stay late.
Well, I guess it's two different things. One is for how many people is starting, I like I I feel like we should separate these two things. One is for how many people is it a hardship to get here at six thirty? So we should have an understanding of that. And then, uh, I because I I feel like if we get into this very granular discussion about like how it could work better, but really it's being driven by the fact that it's too hard to get here, then we're losing sight of something bigger. So I can say six thirty is not ideal for me because I've sort of worked it out with when I can do the handoff without having a babysitter on the weeks my husband doesn't travel. However, we do want student board members, so I will do my best to figure that out if that's the the way we proceed. So I'm not going to say it's a hard, I can't make it. It's just my, but if I had to vote either way, I would say I'd be fine with, you know, making it six thirty. I think other people have different situations. We should probably talk about how many people.
How many people would if it would be a hardship to get here at six thirty?
Kenya, don't know.
I'll send the dinner.
Two. I think Kenya had her hand raised.
I said two, one, two.
Also considering that the public, we'd want them to participate as well.
The the public would be coming at seven o'clock where we'd be starting to talk about the business of the district, yes.
I just think that if, um, if I'm going to be in a minority, and I've been in a minority before, so I'm not really, um, new to this position, um, I would hope that just because there's two of us or even one of us that can't make it at six thirty at this time be changed anyway and that I'm not afforded the opportunity to participate. So I get what you're trying to do, however, everyone's sitting at this table and probably everyone watching in the last four years knows that it is very difficult for me to get here at six thirty or six o'clock. I make every effort when there's a meeting to try to, um, change my schedule, um, at at work. And so the way I have done it, um, for the past four years is I actually, um, do what I have to do at other times or extend those times to ensure that I'm present and ready at seven o'clock here for these meetings.
And I'm looking at it at from the kid perspective, but I also look at it that the only thing that would be talked about in executive session are items on the agenda. If you didn't have any questions about the items on the agenda, it it really, the executive session would pertain. I mean, if we.
What about?
There's no guarantee the executive session will only last half an hour either. I I think I think the executive session is somewhat of an unknown. I'd rather have.
Can I just interrupt on that because we have been keeping executive session to the time that we said that we would return, um, this whole year. So when I'm planning the agenda.
It hasn't been going over.
When I've planned the agenda with Matt, we say how much time we're going to have for each discussion and we've been holding to that.
But it hasn't been thirty minutes. It has not been thirty minutes.
We've never.
Well, that's the thing is because we've been talking about things that, um, that are executive session material but aren't on the agenda.
So you say you're proposing two executive sessions for every meeting now?
Um, propose, we may not have to have that first executive session if there's no questions about items on the agenda, but yes, we would always have the second executive session.
Well, I think that I would say that if it's a hardship for any of the currently elected board members, you I I don't think you can do it. I I think you could say, you know, that's something that you could sort of say in the future, we will, after the next election or something, we want to change the way that runs, but it seems, I mean, we've kind of talked about this before when we talked about changing the night of the meeting. And in that case, too, we talked about it in the future because people who get elected, they get elected based on, you know, thinking they can do it within the schedule. So I I I feel like I I don't think we can just do that if if to, you know, if any of the members can't make their earlier time.
I agree, I agree with Meredith and and Kenya that we should all, you know, be be or come all committed to be here at seven, we should keep it at seven. Because you know, the meeting, we had the luxury of being out of here at a reasonable time recently, but they could just as easily go until ten, eleven, twelve again, so, um, depending on what's going on. So really trying to, you know, assume that we want to get through all the business for the, uh, for the, you know, student members to be out by nine, I don't think we can guarantee that.
All right, so we'll try starting at seven and we'll, I'll be cognizant of how long that first exec would be.
Well, what do you think of of Anthony's idea of of pulling, you know, of pulling things that need to go into exec for? I mean, it's a little, it's it seemed a little complicated at first, I mean, it does seem a little complicated to me, but it seems like it might serve the purpose of making it easier on the students.
Yeah, right now, the seventeen items.
Or we could, we could pull, like say we pull them from the agenda, then we go into our regular scheduled, uh, executive session.
Yeah.
Right? Because there's always a second exec on there and a consent prior to that.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Then go into and then know that we'd be coming out of that second exec and acting on items.
Well, right, but no first exec then is what I think that's what Anthony was.
Yeah.
You save yourself not needing a second exec.
I mean.
I understand that. The only hard part is, is when we need to seek legal advice.
Yeah, I was going to say, what time do they come?
Because then what time do you ask them to come?
Yeah.
For that legal advice?
I think, I think they said they would, they would accommodate us when we hired.
But we won't know what time that legal advice would be.
Well, we'd have to manage our time. I mean, there are going to be stuff that is not going to be controversial, that we're going to get brought on and fly through. And this controversial stuff will have to come after after exec.
Well, and I mean, you could say, you know, in those cases, that if we if we asked the lawyer to come at nine, that we we run the meeting till nine and then when the lawyer comes, that's when the student, we're trying to dismiss the students anyway and.
Yeah.
Take that break. I mean, it's not perfect. I, you know, and some community members have asked that, have said, oh, I wish the meeting started at seven. I think others will, it won't be, you're never going to please everyone, obviously. I think that trying to make it as accommodating for the students as possible seems important to me, seems like priority.
That's why I brought up is because I was thinking from the student perspective.
I know, but and so I'm and so I'm saying, could you, we could, you know, vote on while after the next election, we're going to change the time of the meeting. I mean, I, when we talked about it before, you know, it was this thing like, well, we would want to give existing board members notice that we're changing it because if we change the meeting to a place where a board member cannot participate, that's not really.
So then my question is, how much notice would someone need to adjust their schedule?
I would say starting in the new, in the next cycle, July.
So after the next election?
If you said now, hey, listen, we're going to go from July, like we were talking about Tuesdays as well, right? We're going to.
Right, but so for you, for example, like you're you're not up for reelection at the next, in this cycle.
Right.
But if it became inconvenient for you or you couldn't do it anymore, then it would sort of force your resignation, right?
I'd have to see how it goes, see, you know, see how the the work schedule goes and see if I can continue to maneuver, right, to to attend the Tuesday meeting, right, if that's what we were going to all decide to go to.
Actually, I.
If we couldn't do it right now, but if we say, hey, listen, in July, we we're going to change to this, then I'll have to start figuring out how to prepare for that.
Actually, I would like to try Meredith's idea first. Let's have a meeting from seven to nine with the students and have the lawyer come in at nine and, um, they they can go home at nine and, um, we will break for executive session. We'll only need one executive session because it's all there in the calendar and the schedule anyway and and then come out mid, mid, finish making decisions.
And I will have to check with our attorneys to see if that's an option for them to come at nine. I know they've said it in the past and they usually are accommodating to come to any time that we want, so.
Yeah, but but I mean, I mean, the 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 main, the main importance is the students. And if we're promised to keep them from seven to nine, then then that'll force us to say, okay, well, executive session, thank you for coming tonight, you know, and then we can get feedback from the students as to, you know, hey, you know, I wish we would have talked about this or, you know, I'm glad we finished at that or whatever, so.
Is there, is there a limitation on the students' time? I recognize reasonableness, right, for saying nine.
There's no limitation.
Then why don't we, why don't we go as we have it now and then see from, get feedback from the students as to how, is that working or is it not? Maybe we're far enough into the consent agenda, it doesn't.
Well, we, the one thing we could do is we could try to have the first exec as only a half hour, as, you know, just really the kind of fires that need to be, so at least the meeting would start at seven thirty and there would be some.
So that's what I'm going to try and do. I just wanted to see proactively have a discussion as to how much of a hardship it would be, get everybody's minds, student centered around kids saying, hey, what are we going to do to facilitate the meeting to assist them and getting their work done as well as being part of this board? So I I got the feedback and I understand.
Student board members I've worked with in the past, uh, they always stay for the board comment, but then, I mean, there was a lot of them in Ithaca, but they would sort of trickle out as they needed to, like it wasn't.
Right.
You know, they're not voting, they don't need to stay till a wee hours. So any sort of workshop discussion and board comment was like their main time. So I, and I, I'll communicate with them if we do that seven, seven thirty exec, you know, that you just done at seven thirty and if there's a change, I'll let them know.
Okay.
I think having two is great, though, like if we do go into exec, they can, and just two in general, it's like they kind of can rely on each other a little bit and, you know, that whole thing, so, um, I'm excited about that.
Seven thirty start may help with their dinner plans, too, so.
They they might not eat crapples. All right, thank you. It gave me some direction. All right, now the consent agenda. All right, the use of consent agenda in support of education makes more effective use of time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are in included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on consent agenda may so indicate and the item would be considered and voted on separately thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issues. Are any items that anybody would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Eleven point oh eight.
Eleven point oh eight.
Eleven point ten.
Eleven point twelve.
Eleven point ten, eleven point twelve.
And eleven point eleven.
What was that last one?
Uh, eleven point eleven.
Okay. I need a motion to, um, accept the consent agenda minus eleven point oh eight, eleven point ten, eleven point twelve, and eleven point eleven.
Motion.
Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Bill, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine off.
Motion to approve eleven point oh eight.
Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Bill, comments or questions?
My question is, um, I know, I am aware that the city, um, forecloses or confiscates, whatever the proper legal term is, on unpaid tax, property of unpaid taxes, but if they owe the school taxes as well, how does that work?
Those are the school taxes, so we, um, once collection is over, we must remit the unpaid to the City of Beacon or to Dutchess County to do wapentures in Fishville. And then they collect on our behalf and they remit the taxes to us with a two percent. They add their own penalty on top of it.
Okay.
Um, so there's a lot that goes on between the time we close collection and foreclosure. It's a bigger time. They, um, they also make us whole, so after two years, the City of Beacon makes the district whole, so they pay all the taxes and it's three years for the county.
Oh.
And then they're allowed to do anything with the property themselves. We're not allowed. The district doesn't do anything like that, but they do. So, um, we do eventually get all of our money.
Better, better than.
Okay. What was that, Anthony?
No, it's like we're better situation than they, I guess.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine off. I need a motion for eleven point one oh. Motion to approve eleven point one oh.
Second.
Mike, a second, or is Anthony?
Yes.
Comments or questions, Mike?
Well, my, my question is that this looks like, um, the task that we're trying, we're contracting out here is work that would occur after school, after-school reading support of students. Is there any opportunity for this work to be done in-house so that this, you know, this this funding could be done with a, you know, in-house, you know, teacher after school performing this as in addition to their duties?
Um, eleven point ten, eleven point eleven is pass-through money for Title I and it goes directly to the, um, private school, um, that's within our district. So it is being done in-house in the private school to consultants that are on the agreement are doing reading work at the private school, but that is their money that they're entitled to through the Title I grant.
So we, there's no opportunity for, um, teachers here in the district doing this, you know, this, uh, reading program after their normal scheduled day?
They're not our, they're our, they're private, parochial students, they're not our students.
They're not our students, okay.
They're doing it with their own students.
The BTA contract doesn't allow for us to contract out on stuff that they could do.
Also, that's what I thought, so that's what I was wondering if, but this is clearly not the case.
Correct.
Okay, no, I understand it, thank you. And that's, and that's good, well, I'll bring up the other for eleven eleven, but it's the same question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine off. Eleven point one two?
Motion to approve eleven point one two.
Second.
Meredith, Anthony, comments or questions? Was it you, Meredith?
It was me. I just want to say I'm, I'm really glad that we're doing this. This has been something that community members have, um, come and asked about repeatedly and, um, we were way below most other districts in the county, so it's nice to be becoming competitive, at least at one thing.
I wanted to say also that I think the the non-certified increase is only five dollars. I'd rather see it as ten. Uh, when I looked at the information presented by, uh, uh, in the, in the email, we had an attachment that gave a listing of the other, other comparable districts, and it seemed to me that our position might be better if 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 the non-certs were raised by ten. I think if you give a five-dollar increase, you're not making much of a statement. I don't know how much pull that has with anybody. We're trying, the problem is we're trying to get more people to do this, be more competitive[1750.37] We're trying, the problem is we're trying to get more people to do this, be more competitive and competing for what appears to be a limited supply of, of subs.
The counterargument to that is I would like to put the monies more with the certified and the retired teachers. So we have people that are in the field teaching our kids instead of people that are not.
Well, where do we get, what's the breakdown, what do we typically get in terms of certified versus non-certified?
The district didn't have certified, uh, non-certified subs for a while, correct?
I'm sorry?
Did the district not have non-certified subs for a while? That, that's, that just became relatively new while I was on the board, so within the last four years.
Two years ago, we were not, um, seeking non-certified substitutes, we've broadened that just because there is a shortfall. But honestly, if we can be strongly competitive with the certified substitute rate, that will help us greatly.
And, and-
So it seems like the priority is on that.
And we go back with it, the non-certified people that you're typically getting are kids that are in college, they're, so they may not be certified but going to it. And, so, I, I'm hoping that's the non-certified people we're getting, not, you know.
Also, also, why do, why do we have the, um, designation for a retired ECSD certified teacher, is that similar to other districts?
So some other, pardon me, some other districts do in fact, um, have a differential, uh, compensation rate for their own retired teachers. Um, again, in looking at strategies to address some of the shortfalls, um, of, with substitutes across all districts, we wanted to look to use this as another strategy to hopefully increase our, our pool of, uh, available and, you know, um, subs that are, uh, accepting Beacon, uh, assignments. The second is in comparison, um, at the secondary level, when we don't have substitutes available, we are paying, um, for teachers to get to work, um, during their, their prep, they get paid right now at twenty-five dollars, um, a day. So there is, and, um, that's where that hundred and twenty-five came from, so that it is both, um, uh, an incentive for perhaps some of our retired teachers, um, who have not considered subbing in the past but may, um, but also, so that it's broadening our sub pool. And ultimately, it's the same, uh, dollar exchange as if we don't have a substitute in a classroom and we have teachers covering the classes.
So what, what she's trying to say is, say that, um, a math teacher was out and they didn't have a sub, they would go to other teachers in the building and ask if they wanted a sixth period. So it could be a P E teacher subbing for that math class and they would pay twenty-five dollars for that period. They have five teaching periods, so she's saying it's-
It costs the district a hundred and twenty-five.
Well, next year it's gonna go to thirty dollars if you're trying to do this contract.
Do we, um, so do we, but do we have a, a specific line on it now? I, I understand what we do and we have other teachers filling in those periods, but if we bring in retired, um, subs, you know, certified teachers, uh, do they get paid different than, than the non-retired certified substitutes?
In Beacon?
Yeah, currently.
I think it depends-
We, we had one instance of that with the longer-term position earlier in the year that we filled with a retired teacher. And we just did it as an individual thing.
He was, he was one of our retirees.
Yeah, he was one of our retirees.
He's asking if there's, if a teacher retired from another district comes in, they would be, I think, I'm assuming that they would be at the certified teacher rate.
Yes.
That this is an incentive, that one twenty-five is for somebody who knows the district, is familiar, can come in and get up and running very quickly. The, it's sort of almost like the cost of having something be a little bit more seamless. And then, you know, the, um, the certified teacher, you're paying for the credential, non-certified, you're paying for someone to be in the room.
Right, and I was just wondering if we do that now with our, with our own retirees, you were talking about, so do we do that, do we pay more for our own retirees now?
No, we currently don't, and we have-
On an individual basis, that has been addressed and we're saying it one time, that has been, once. Anthony?
So, the, the certified rate, according to the, the chart that was sent to us, um, is competitive, uh, matches, uh, the, a lot, a lot of the upper range. But the, uh, uncertified doesn't, does not do the same, it actually, um, ma, it only matches a couple of the lower range, lower range school districts. And I understand that the analogy of putting more money in the certified, but if we didn't, if we don't have that many uncertified, and uncertified is a last resort anyway, we're not spending that money. But if we need it, we can, we can compete with the other districts, I think that was the reason why we're raising both those rates. So should we not raise the uncertified rate in the same manner as the certified rate to match the other districts?
For, for my, this is my personal preference.
Yeah.
I would rather have, to have the district pay a teacher to cover the class instead of having one of my kids, my, with a non-certified teacher.
Do we have a problem now attracting uncertified subs?
Um, I was just talking about my personal preference, Anthony.
I mean, as, as, as if an issue where we can't find uncertified subs that we need? I mean, cause the whole point of raising this is, is, is to attract people to, you know, come to the district and work as subs. And, you know, I, I, I don't see any point in raising it if it's not an issue.
I don't think we have that historic perspective, Bill, because we only started doing it two years ago.
Well, but I mean, that's two years where if, if we're, we're struggling to find-
We have some that apply, to answer your question. Um, the, 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 the greatest concern that I hold, um, and what's, uh, the backing of, of the recommendation I've made to all for the consideration of the rates, is that even among the, uh, certificated, uh, substitutes that we've appointed since September, we can't compete to get them to accept our positions because the districts around us also have vacancies and they're gonna go to the higher paying district. And that's a matter of, you know, I mean, that's an economic decision. This will at least allow us to be competitive, um, and so, and hopefully then for those that are currently in the pool, be able to consider taking our jobs.
Go to an uncertified.
And that would be the goal, is if then, if we can advertise that we are paying at a higher competitive rate, that there will be a greater interest, um, in folks coming to substitute. And we do, uh, first and foremost, desire to have a certified teacher in the classroom when and when possible. The other provision that we always have to pay attention to with non-certified substitutes is there are some limitations in terms of the total number of days consecutively that they're allowed to work, uh, in a classroom in front of children. So that will just, you know, again, we wanna build up a greater base of certificated subs available.
But, but my, my comment still stands, I mean, the cert, even the cert, if you look at the certified rate, it's competitive but not higher. So you're, you're only matching what the other districts are doing. If you wanted to attract them, and you're saying to attract them, it has to be higher, then we need to go above a hundred. And the same thing with uncertified, if you want to, uh, attract them, you need to go higher. I mean, one district only-
Well, I think the point is that we, we leveled the playing field, you know, before it was just a no-brainer that you just wouldn't take, you know, if you had a position offered to you in a district that played a hundred and we only paid eighty-two or whatever, we were, I think we were playing seventy-five when I was first- Yeah, seventy times the original.
Right, then you, then you get people that will, will, you know, even if you call them, they, they might say no, because they're hoping to get another one. Or if it's something like long-term, as soon as they start getting calls from another district, they'll say, no, it'd be, it's the same, as long as it's not, you know, we're, we're not inconvenient as far as, as far as commuting here. You know, I don't see any reason why they would wanna go to another district if it's, we're paying the same.
But part of the briefing material is that there's a shortage, so, are, don't we want to be higher?
I think what we did, we agreed that there was a shortage of cer, of certified teachers, that that was where the shortage was. There's not a shortage of uncertified, there's a shortage of certified.
We have some in our pool, but we also, we have certified staff in the pool, it needs to be a larger pool, but of those that we have, we're not accepting our jobs right now.
So we're saying, what, I think with the, what I understood this was that we were prioritizing the incentive.
Correct.
And so we were prioritizing the incentive around the certified and retired. And that, as far as, you know, where we were trying to be competitive and broadening the ball.
We, we also, we don't have to negotiate this, so we can see how this goes. And if it's not giving us the results that we want, we can always come back-
Yep.
With a different idea, cause it's one of the few things-
Don't make me regret calling it, I just wanted to compliment, you know, that we were moving forward on something that needed to, we needed to address. And I think it will help the district move and work much more smoothly. And I, and I have no doubt in my mind that if it's not working, we'll hear about it.
Our district's paying one hundred.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, nine oh. Eleven eleven.
Motion for one eleven.
Second.
Comments or questions?
I, it was the same question I had for eleven point ten, and, uh, so I'm, I'm satisfied with the answer.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, nine oh. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals, the board is not expected to take action after executive session.
Still moved.
Kristen, second, with Meredith. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, nine oh. Thank you.